Let's call this meeting to order. It is the regularly scheduled meeting of the City of Asbury Park Planning Board on Monday, May 3, 2021 at 7:00 PM. Madam Chairwoman, you can read your public notice.
Okay, cool.
Okay, the following meeting, can we let the public in?
Um.
Andy?
I'm going into planning board meeting, can I call you back later?
They are coming in now.
Okay. Okay, the following meeting is being conducted by electronic means in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, Publical on 1975, amended 2020, which explicitly permits a public body to conduct meetings electronically during a state of emergency. A notice of this meeting has been provided to the Coaster and Asbury Park Press. All notices are on file with the Board Secretary. In addition, a notice regarding this virtual meeting and instructions were published in the Asbury Park Press and the City of Asbury Park website. A copy of that notice is on file with the Board Secretary. The notices in conduct of this meeting are in accordance with the guidelines for virtual meetings issued by the New Jersey Department of Community Affairs. Just a notice that all microphones for public users are muted until the public questions or comment period. If you like to speak during that time only, please use the raise hand button in Zoom if you're on a computer or dial *9 if you're on a telephone. Your name or your last four digits of your phone number will be called when it's time for you to speak. If at any time during your question, you are deemed to be out of topic, out of line, or out of line, we reserve the right to mute your microphone and we'll make that announcement that that has occurred. During the public comment session only, the public has three minutes to speak. Please turn off all cell phones and electronic devices during the meeting and please identify yourself before you speak. This meeting is being recorded and will be available to view via AP TV. Please join me in the pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To a country which sustains one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Liberty and justice for all.
Get the roll called, Jack.
Yes, ma'am. Mayor John Moore.
Here.
Councilwoman Yvonne Clayton.
Here.
Michael Manzella.
Here.
Jim Henry.
Here.
Jennifer Souter.
Here.
Trudy Syfax. Absent. Alexis Taylor.
Here.
Eric Galipo.
Here.
Thank you. Rick Lambert.
Here.
And Barbara Krizak. Okay, we have nine members.
All right, the first order of business is a resolution for 1405 Fourth Avenue, Block 2101, Lot 9.
I would propose that we put that off till the end, until after the executive session.
Okay. We can do that. Then the next item on the agenda are the applications for AP Block 4001, Venture Urban Renewal LLC Block 4001, Lot 2-15. Well, that was a mouthful. Did we, Michelle, did we end up on a date on the 6/3 for a special meeting?
Yes, I have confirmation from the professionals and the board members for June 3, the Thursday.
Okay, um, I would like, go ahead. Sorry?
No, I'm looking for my calendar just to make sure I said the right date.
Yeah, that's the day.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, can I get a motion from someone from the board to to move this meeting to June, it's going to be a special meeting, June 3, 2021, without notice?
Oh, with notice.
Oh, with notice.
I spoke with with the counsel for the advocate and advised that notice would be required for that meeting. And he was already going to do it anyway as a matter of common sense.
Okay, so can I get a motion for a special meeting on June 3, 2021, with notice for this application?
Jim Henry, so moves.
I second it.
Okay, hold on one second, motion. This is Kingsley Street. June 3. Okay, the motion was by Jim Henry?
Yes.
Yes.
And seconded by Barbara.
Right.
Okay, John Moore?
Yes.
Yvonne Clayton?
Yes.
Michael Manzella?
Yes.
Jim Henry?
Yes.
Jennifer Souter?
Yes.
Alexis Taylor?
Yes.
Eric Galipo?
Yeah.
Rick Lambert?
Yes.
And Barbara Krizak.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, the first, the next item we have on the agenda are the amendments to the Main Street Redevelopment Plan.
Yes. Okay, why don't we get Michelle Alonso sworn in, since she's here on behalf of the city? Michelle, oh, great. You solemn swear a testimony about giving this man the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
I do.
Please state your name for the record and your affiliation with the city in connection with the presentation this evening.
Michelle Alonso, Director of Planning and Redevelopment for the City of Asbury Park. I'm also a licensed professional planner.
Okay, you can put your hand down, it's okay. Is there anyone from our staff that needs to be sworn in this evening? Anyone here from CCH? No? Okay, floor is yours, Michelle.
Oh, Andy, do you have my presentation? Because if you don't, I need you to enable the screen share for me.
It'll be easier if you share it, you can go ahead.
It says I'm disabled.
Uh, try it now.
Okay. Okay. So, good evening, board members and members of the public. Tonight, my presentation is short but sweet. There's been a request for an amendment to the Main Street Redevelopment Plan for a specific project, residential project, um, that if you can see this, wait, I want to do full slides, give me one minute. You also have to forgive me, I have a cold, so I'm a little stuffy and I may cough during this presentation. So, you have before you hear a a red boundary, a specific developer has approached the city that they want to do a medium-density residential development with retail commercial on the ground floor at the southeast corner of Main and Monroe Avenue. Now, only one of these lots is in the redevelopment plan currently, the parcel that fronts Main Street. So, part of tonight's amendment is to add the red boundary you see here tonight into the redevelopment plan to enable this project to go forward without it having to be split into the Planning Board and the Zoning Board of Adjustment. We're adding this parcel in tonight through the area in need of rehabilitation designation that the city has. The city has a citywide rehabilitation designation and that enables us to create redevelopment plans for these, any parcel in the city. And this is separate from a redevelopment designation. Where redevelopment designation is you have to find the criteria that a parcel is blighted. You don't have to do that for an area in need of rehabilitation. So, we would be adding these parcels to the plan by the plan having the dual designation. And this would give these additional parcels all the full powers of redevelopment except for the power of eminent domain, which is completely unnecessary in this case because it's all owned by one owner and it's for specific private development. The extra addition to this plan is specific for this block and lot only would be to give this developer an extra story. Currently, in the Main Street Redevelopment Plan, the maximum height, at least this section of the Main Street Redevelopment Plan, maximum height permitted is three stories. If you provide affordable housing, you're allowed a fourth story. So, specific for this development tonight, we would permit this developer to have an additional story for a total of five stories, 60 feet, and if so desired, they can also do an additional penthouse. I've also added a provision here that large expanses of blank walls shall feature murals to be approved by the Municipal Public Art Commission because this project is most likely going to go to the property line where you cannot have windows per the building code. So, I anticipate that there would be some blank walls and in order for it not to be, the elevation to be a big void, this would have the developer provide visual interest in the form of a mural. And then, the rest of the sheets you have before you are the replacement maps that would show the new lots added to the redevelopment plan and the new lots in its subzone in the Main Street Redevelopment Plan. And that is the presentation for tonight. Again, it's a very specific amendment for a specific project. It's not a wholesale amendment to the Main Street Redevelopment Plan. So, if anyone has any questions, I will answer them because that's it for my presentation for tonight.
Anyone on the Planning Board have any questions?
Jim Henry, I have a couple of questions. Michelle, will you go back to your second aerial view? You show the proposed lot I think was it 2 through 5?
Yes.
Just to the east of that eastern boundary, there's a single family, I'm sorry, there's a family, I think it's a two-family house, correct?
Correct.
And then, to the east of that, there is a vacant lot, pretty substantial vacant lot.
Correct.
Did you consider adding that vacant lot to this particular zone?
Jim, excuse me, I can help you here. That lot and the two structures going to the south along Bond Street, I'm 99% sure, the two structures, I know the lot, that was the subject matter of an extensive application before the Zoning Board of Adjustment within the last year or so. And that property is no, I think it's going to become a parking lot for the multiple units in the two buildings that are listed there. So, that's already had an application for development approved over at the zoning board level.
Okay.
Is that correct, Michelle?
I, I'm not sure, but
I can look it up while you're engaged in a discussion.
Because I was going to say, it's not included because we had asked this developer if they could acquire those parcels to round out the lot and they failed to acquire those parcels, they're under separate ownership. So, we do not want to put those parcels into the redevelopment plan unless they're going to be part of this development because as the multifamily home and the vacant lot, they don't fit with the Main Street pattern of development. Like, we wouldn't necessarily want to see retail going down Monroe. It's, we want to focus our retail on Main Street, which would happen with this development. So, I don't feel the zoning for, in the Main Street Redevelopment Plan, would fit these two parcels on their own. It'd be one thing if
Go ahead, finish what you're saying.
No, if they were definitely going to be part of this development, we would include it, but they're not part of this development.
And you're saying that the, that existing tire shop on the corner, that's going to be retail on Main?
Yes.
Okay, and of course, if that's on Main, it'll run up some, some distance on Monroe, is there, at this point, a cutoff?
It will run a little bit up Monroe, but also the parking for this parcel has to be accommodated and some of, and it's going to be internal and it will also go down a level, a partial level, but that will also be occupying the frontage on Monroe.
Okay, and how many units are proposed for this mixed-use development?
Right now, conceptually, I say conceptually because it, you know, the development is conceptual at this point. About 65 units.
About 65?
Yes.
Okay, and did you consider anything, adding anything across the street to the, where Main Street Redevelopment, the vacant lots across the street, across Monroe, on the north side of Monroe?
No.
The ones adjacent to?
No, because I was not looking to do a more wholesale adjustment to the boundaries of the redevelopment plan. I mean, the boundaries for the redevelopment plan about, where we going now on about 13, 15 years ago when the plan was developed, were thought out pretty carefully. And this is the combination because this particular developer has done a lot of semblage to be able to get a fair number of units into this development. But this is clearly, again, very specific for this development and it makes sense because it's also, again, all the same owner.
Okay, and as far as the 65 units, how many are going to be affordable?
20%.
So, that's about 15?
Yes.
Hi, this is Rick. So, the reason for this is because they don't, it would be too, part of it would be allowed under the neighborhood, I mean, the business classification and the other would be, they would have to go before the Board of Zoning Adjustment for variances for a variety of things?
Density. Um, yes, because this is a split zone because currently the, you know, the part of the parcel outlined in red is in the R1 or the R2, I can't remember right now, but low-density residential district. And it would be very
So, how much of a variance would be required for the Board of Zoning Adjustment?
A lot, FAR, density, height, bulk standards.
So, it seems to me, this is, I mean, we're doing a spot zone to allow something that when these plan, these zoning classifications are created, was created for a specific reason and to, I mean, this really is a spot zone to allow something that's really out of context with what it's, the underlying zoning is? That's not of concern?
No, because, again
I mean, the building, like, the building adjacent behind it is what, a two-story building?
Yes.
And then you're going to have, what, a five-story building right up against it?
Yes. And because when this, you know, originally, the Main Street Plan just had this, this parcel, I'm circling here, in it because that, that made sense for the time. And again, when you're in a redevelopment area, you know, the courts have sustained that you can do spot zoning. You can very much curate what your development will look like for the benefit of bringing about economic revitalization. And here is a case where you have a vacant used car lot, which also has contamination on it. And the benefit here is that we can get this lot redeveloped and have a vibrant, active storefront on Main Street. But if we add the rest of the parcel into it, we can have create more units to pop, when the goals of the Main Street Redevelopment Plan is to, and the master plan is to add units to Main Street and we get affordable units that, to be added to the mix on Main Street. So, the municipal council, in referring this to the Planning Board, thought that this development proposal was a good idea. It also doesn't make a lot of sense to send a project like this to both boards because you would essentially, it would go to the Planning Board and you would all essentially just hear part of the building, part of the building that's in the Main Street Redevelopment Plan. And then, after you guys approve it, if you approved it, and they wouldn't be able to go the extra story because you can't have a height amendment, a height variance in the redevelopment plan, the, the rest of the parcel would have to go to the Zoning Board and it's more than the rest of the parcel, it's part of the building. So, it also doesn't make practical sense to have a split zone application like this where the zone line goes through a building.
Yeah, plus They come back before us for a site plan?
No, 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 you don't, you don't want to, you don't want to do this by way of variance application. You want to do this by legislation that creates the use to be a permitted zone. The other, the other way would be the Zoning Board acting more in a capacity of the legislative branch of the government, which is the mayor and council, which is not good zoning. If it's going to be permitted, it should be done via ordinance amendment, not via a list of laundry list of variances, including use in bulk.
Should there be some examination to see what other parcels exist on Main Street that are similar to this? Because I'm sure there are other locations that have businesses on Main, but then behind it is kind of, you know, nothing really going on and it may be more advantageous to address it overall as opposed to individual applications. Somebody comes, oh, I'd like to do this, but you need to allow me to add this parcel to the, the Main Street Redevelopment Plan?
Well, again, well, first, let me say, when Main Street was looked at, there were a lot of parcels not included adjacent to Main Street because they were one-in-two-family homes. And I don't think we want to touch that. We, we don't want to gamble that a business is going to acquire someone's one-in-two-family home and expand. We'd rather do it on a case-by-case basis.
No, what I'm saying is there, there are probably other locations where, like, because behind this building, it's, it's empty. I mean, there's no home there. I'm not advocating for the demolition of existing residences. I mean, are there other locations that have this kind of setup where there's just vacant land adjacent to commercial use on Main?
Truthfully
One block south, Rick.
Pardon me?
One block south has the same situation. Yeah, the other side of the old YMCA building, Jim?
Yeah.
Yes, yeah.
We're in the midst of hearing a separate application, to your point, Rick, that has that condition where the lot is, you know, behind the pharmacy.
Right, that one, that other one that we listened to.
Yeah, so, yes, I think that, if I can interject, I think there probably are conditions that might look a lot like this. You know, we have to, I think we would have to look more holistically across the whole thing. But I wanted to address something you brought up earlier about the concern over five stories next to two stories. The reality is that the Main Street Redevelopment Area is meant to induce redevelopment of certain, you know, of, of that area. And so, if it allows five or six stories in this case, other parcels that are adjacent may begin to redevelop in a way that we had intended them to. So, that two-story could become a four or five-story, which is what the plan allows. And I'm not suggesting that historic buildings should be demolished to make new buildings and all that. But we also want to look at two important aspects of this application when we consider the additional height that may or may not be allowed as a result of us hearing it. And that is first, its proximity to the train station argues for an increase in density. That walkability and affordability are both characteristics that should be located as close to train stations and transit centers as possible. And then, the inclusion of a 20% affordable housing bonus really helps us walk the walk and talk the talk about what we've been saying we want to see develop in our community. And so, that extra height is what sweetens the pot for the developer. And I think we really need to try and do what we can to secure the, the construction of affordable units within our community.
How many new units will be again, Michelle? I think that it's, it's nice to finally have a residential development come through that actually has affordable housing as part of it.
I think I said it's, um
You said 65?
Yeah, 65.
65, and 20% of it is affordable?
Yes.
13.
I'd just like to throw something else in with you, what you're saying, Eric, and what Rick has been saying. This building at five stories is going to be bigger than the YMCA building across the street. And it's going to be about somewhere in the magnitude of
We, we haven't heard the application yet, it's all speculative.
That's what this is, Eric.
We're only deciding whether to bring the lots into the redevelopment.
Let me finish, Eric, let me finish, let me make my point. A building that's going to be five stories is going to be nearly 25 feet higher than the YMCA building across the street. And that building dwarfs everything else in the neighborhood. And if we, if we get to the situation where the additional story is added, I think we ought to get more than just 20% affordable housing units. I mean, this is going to dwarf everything on that block. The house to the east, the building to the south, the buildings to the southeast corner, this building is going to dwarf that. And if, if the zoning is going to change to increase the height from four to five stories plus a 12-foot penthouse, that's going to be pretty close to 25 feet higher than the big building across the street. So, maybe consideration needs to be given to more than just 20% in this case.
But Okay, if I may, we haven't heard the application yet. So, all we're doing is deciding whether or not to bring these lots into the redevelopment zone. This applicant is going to have to come to us with their proposal, which we will judge on its merits at that time.
Next, that's not, Eric?
If I may, if I may
Okay, absolutely.
It is, you know, I it is difficult on its own to get 20% and make the economics work. Now, I am, I wish it was 100% affordable housing. And I think we should absolutely advocate for more. We're hearing this about bringing the lots into the zone, not about the merits of the actual application yet. So, everything we talk, every time we talk about that application, which we haven't seen, it's all speculative. We aren't changing the height that's allowed in the, in the redevelopment zone at this time.
Oh, we are.
Well, thank you. We are, we are simply bringing these lots in and saying it's five stories, which we all know the best place to put density in our town is around the train station. This is less than 400 feet away from the train station.
Your point's well taken, but we're changing the zoning here to permit an extra story. And we're doing it for one particular lot. And what I, what I'm saying here is that by doing that, we ought to get more than 20% affordable housing, but it is, I hear what you're saying.
We can argue that point when we hear the merits of the applicant.
But, but the problem is that when you change the height, you automatically add a bunch of units. And I would, if we're going to do this, I'd like to see the height stay the same and let the applicant come in and make the pitch to add another story to this building at the time that he comes in for a site plan.
Jim, what I'd like to say is the reason that we're, that he's giving us the affordable units that we're getting is because he's getting the additional height. If, if we say you're going to have four stories, then we don't get the affordable housing at all.
Agreed, I, I will back Councilwoman Clayton up on this, that the economics of providing those affordable units are difficult at best. those affordable units are difficult at best. And in order to induce the developer to provide them at all, we need to have in good faith said, here's what's allowed. Now, we can make it a, I, I don't know, can, can Jack opine to us about how conditional we can be about that? You only get five stories if you do the affordable.
Well, our task is, we're, we're doing a legislative review with recommendations back to the mayor and council. So what we can, we, we have to, A, first find out, ascertain if it's, the proposals are consistent with the master plan and the stated goals and objectives of the redevelopment plan. And then we can make recommendations back to mayor and council about what the board may feel. But our task is somewhat narrowly defined, but we can, we can bring up other matters. The only other thing I wanted to bring up is that I pulled up the YMCA building. Now, the first floor in the YMCA building is much taller than one story because I was a member there for years, played tons of basketball and all that. And then the top has three stories on top of it and it's got a rather large parapet wall. So I don't know that that building, when you, if you define a story as being, let's say, twelve feet, I don't know that it's gonna be another 25 feet taller than that.
And, Jack, just to add to that, I think the characterization that the YMCA building dwarfs everything around it is not necessarily correct. I would say that it's an appropriate height and density for one of the densest areas of our, our city.
Okay.
So in my opinion, I, I would say that both getting 20% affordable and having five stories are both appropriate for this area and lot.
So, but it would actually be six stories, right? With, could the penthouse would be an additional story?
Right, yeah, well, the way I wrote it, because it was asked by the developer, can they have the penthouse as well? Because, yeah, they would, they would have, they would have the penthouse, so, but.
So it's sixty feet plus additional twelve for the penthouse for a total of seventy-two feet? And that's block face on Main Street, seventy-two feet?
Michelle, would the penthouse be subject to a smaller, like a percentage of the roof area, so it's set back like other?
Like we did for on Lake, Lake, on Lake Avenue, that building on Lake Avenue.
The downtown redevelopment district so that, you know, it's, it's less, less intrusive, doesn't go to the edge of the building.
I believe this developer wanted it to go to the edge, but I completely, you know, agree that it can be set back and be a percentage in the CBD plan, it's 25% of the roof area and I believe it is 12 feet from the edge.
Okay.
Yeah, this is Rick again. I like the idea because we're gonna get rid of that auto-oriented use that's very much of an eyesore and it also will really establish a solid block face that would contribute greatly to Main Street. But I'm just, I think we should look, I think there should be some effort to look at other sites that present themselves in this similar situation and maybe consider, you know, adding them to the Main Street redevelopment ahead of time and that way just for someone to come in, I don't know, just seems like it'd be proactive versus kind of reacting to a developer to come in. We may, maybe encouraging developers if we've looked at the sites and say, you know, we've decided that this would better suit development on Main Street and we've decided to add these parcels to the Main Street redevelopment district, so to encourage development. I mean, I know there's got to be several that are in this similar situation. Just my two cents.
I, I think we should go back to Councilwoman Clayton's point because I think it's an important one. So, Michelle, are we correct in saying that if we do not grant the additional story, the fifth story, that the developer is not required to provide any affordable housing?
No, right now, he can't, he's required to provide affordable housing to do the fourth story. Reason concerning an additional story is just so we can have this development happen. In other words, and we also, if with the increase, it's a slight bump in density with the additional story. So that means we get a slight bump in the affordable units. But this is more, and again, why this is kind of like a lot by lot request, is this is more of an incentive to see the development happen on this parcel.
Okay.
In other words, we may not want to do this for all of Main Street. We may not want to do this for everyone who approaches us. But we have not, we've passed.
That seems, that seems very kind of arbitrary and capricious to, to, to make that statement. I mean, it seems like someone could say, well, you did it for this parcel, why won't you do it for this one?
Because you can do that in redevelopment.
Yeah, there has to be some sense of rationality. There has to be some legislative rationality to what's being done. It's like, it may fit here and it may not fit elsewhere. So you can have different regs for different spots within the district, within, in, under redevelopment and rehabilitation laws. And it may be that, you know, council thinks that this is a wise spot to put it. Again, they, somebody else can come in for another spot and whether or not it's wise or not will be determined at a later time.
I think of critical importance along this corridor is proximity to mass transit. Because at a certain point, if the density gets too far away from transit, you're actually putting other burdens on parking and everything else. But for me, I, I see the justification for this particular spot because of how well it's served.
You know, the, one of the issues around the four-story thing that, you know, we might want to look at more broadly is that you can do a four-story walk-up building without the cost of an elevator. As soon as you go to five, you now have the cost of the elevator that you distribute over all of the units in the building. And so that additional density is really paying mostly for the addition, for the vertical circulation within the building and all of those other costs that come with the additional density. And it makes the equation around providing the affordable units a little more difficult. And so, you know, I think that we should do, we should do what we can to make the affordable happen. This is, you know, we, we have all of our, I think all of our politics have surrounded this issue for a long time and we need to prove that we can make it work here. And this is an opportunity to do so. Further, I do think that, you know, the, the density, the proximity to transit is really a great argument.
Does anybody else have any other things that they would like to question before we go to the public? Well, planning board members, we're okay? All right, can we open the questioning to the public, please?
Motion, move it.
Okay.
You got a motion?
Move to open.
Second?
Second, Jim Henry.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, ayes, have it.
Okay, we have a couple of hands raised. Can we have unmute three five zero, please, for questions to Michelle Alonso about what was discussed today?
Oh, yeah, Ernest Magnolia, seven ten Northeast Seventh Street, Pointon Beach, Florida. I also have a rental on First Avenue in Asbury Park now. And I'd like to comment that.
Oh, it's not a comment, it's not a comment, it's questions.
Okay. Are we gonna have comments? I know every time I ask comments, you say later.
Yes.
And all the laters seem to evaporate.
None of them evaporate. Everyone gets.
There'll be no comment. There'll be no comment?
No, Barbara just said yes.
There will be, first we go through the questions and then we will go through comments for this topic.
Thank you, Madam Chair, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, so my questions are for the city planner who testified and I, I'd like to ask, so we are talking about joining a non-redevelopment area zone to one in that zone so that this project would have the space, the land, and, and be able to ask for sixty-five units, a penthouse, and a fifth floor, correct? And without the other lot, this isn't even a conception, correct?
Not sure your question about.
Okay.
Yes, isn't it joinment, as you, you phrased it?
Right. Of, of two zoning, of two zones?
Yes.
One's in the master redevelopment Main Street and one's not, correct?
One's in the Main Street redevelopment plan.
And one's not.
Correct.
Okay, thank you. So then the essence of what you're testifying to is the reasons why this lot should be joined, correct?
Correct.
And you stated the reasons, there'll be affordable housing, thirteen units. It will, it will, I think, get rid of something that you say don't looks too good, like some tire place on the corner, I, I understand that. And then you say it's gonna increase density, which the area needs, and someone says it's 400 feet from the train station. Is it 400 feet from the train station?
She didn't testify to that. And if you don't know the answer, say so.
I don't know the answer.
Yes.
Who may, who may or?
No, no, the witness. You're, you're questioning the witness. It wasn't the witness who said that it was 400 feet from the train station. So I said to her, if you know the answer, give it. If you don't know the answer, so state you don't know.
It is, it, it could be because it's definitely within 600 feet.
Okay, all right. The, the units, sixty-five units are, are gonna be accommodated with parking, correct? As for the zone, doesn't the zone require, these are rentals, aren't they?
It doesn't, I didn't testify to that, but.
Okay, okay. Are you allowed to answer if they're rentals or condos or?
No, no.
Okay, okay, okay.
Allowed to answer your parking question.
I'm allowed to answer the parking question?
Yeah, you get, you ask her the parking question, she certainly can answer that.
Okay. Is there, for sixty-five units and a, and a penthouse, how much onsite parking is there gonna be?
So the affordable units are exempt from the parking requirement.
That's thirteen.
And then in the Main Street redevelopment plan, it's one, one space per unit roughly.
On site?
On site, which would be provided onsite.
Okay, so you're saying fifty-five, you're saying there'd be fifty-two parking spaces onsite?
Yes.
I think it's fifty-two, thirteen, yeah, fifty-two. Now, are any, are any of these larger than one bedroom?
The units?
We're talking about, we're talking about.
Well, no, the reason.
But that's not being submitted.
The reason I'm asking is for parking, if they're all one bedroom, I think it's one, one parking per unit. But if they're two-bedroom, I think it requires two cars per unit.
Mm-hmm.
And I'm sure the penthouse is gonna require more, but that's all I'm, I'm just trying to find out if, you know, you're asking for all these, without the zoning and without legislation, accommodations and approvals, but I, I just want to be clear about the parking.
This building will accommodate all the required parking, there's no amendment to the parking requirement.
Okay, so then, so then actually what you're saying, and I'm asking you, then that must mean they're all one bedrooms?
No, no.
Well, wait, if they're not all one bedrooms, how can it accommodate the required parking?
That remains to be seen when an application for development comes before the planning board.
Okay, okay.
And they will have to comply with the ordinance. Now, importantly, a final question to what you're suggesting is, Michelle, is there any provision that parking can be, in way, in lieu of parking contributions can be made to the parking fund with this project?
No, not in the Main Street redevelopment plan.
That's all I need to know, so that, that will answer Mr., that'll give Mr. Magnolia more assurance that they have to park on site.
Right, okay, and assuming they're all one bedrooms?
No.
Okay. No, whatever that is, they'll have to comply.
Right.
Okay, okay, it doesn't matter what they are, I, I understand. So in other words, they'll be on-street parking for whatever the requirements are?
You mean off-street?
Okay.
Off-street parking.
I'm sorry, yeah, okay.
Okay.
Okay, the, the, the five, the fifth story that you're talking about, i- is that the penthouse story or is the penthouse on the fifth story?
I have this.
On top of?
It's on top of the fifth story.
Okay, and the height of the penthouse?
Twelve feet, twelve feet in height maximum for the penthouse. Most penthouses are not the, the twelve, but this is twelve feet in height maximum for penthouse.
Okay, and do you, do you have the height of the four stories of this building?
No.
Because it seems like nobody seemed sure and I just wondered, so it's, it's twelve feet plus what?
You read the ordinance for it, it's right on the screen.
It's, it's right on the screen?
Maximum height of five stories, sixty feet, with an additional penthouse of twelve feet in height maximum permitted.
There you go.
Okay, so is seventy-two feet the total height of the building?
It could be less.
It could, it could be less, but that's, that's the maximum.
The maximum permitted.
Okay. The maximum permitted if the, if the joining of the lots is approved?
It, it's all together. I'm making two major amendments to this plan. One is adding the lots and the other is the specific zoning regulations for block two five oh three, lots one to five.
Okay, okay, but if, if, is it correct if you don't vote to join the lot, that you don't have to worry about a fifth floor because it, it couldn't happen?
It's all one.
In other words, what I'm asking you, is the joining of the lots essential to every single zoning accommodation and whatever you're looking for? Is the first step has to be the joining of the lots?
No, no.
Otherwise, no? So zoning doesn't approve the joining of the lots?
Let me help you here. It's all.
Thank you.
It's all one package, correct?
Correct.
You're not gonna split out part of this, you can do one, A, part of it and not do the other. It's all, you're, you're looking to consolidate these lots in and put them into this Main Street redevelopment zone and these requirements have, are, are what applies to the property. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay.
That's, okay, I agree, I agree. And I, and my question was, then, then, if the lots are not joined, then you can't seek the other zoning, spot zoning, accommodations, like a fifth floor, a penthouse, et cetera, correct?
No, it, it just goes together. This is what I'm presenting to the.
I know.
You said yes, not no. You're trying to say yes, that you can't come in piecemeal. If you come in at all, this is what your maximum is permitted and you have to have this total lot area.
That's correct.
Yeah, there's an.
That's, that's, it is, what I'm saying is, without this.
I know what you're saying. I'm just trying to get her to understand what you're saying.
Right, because I'm having trouble.
All right.
If you vote yes for everything, it's, everything's gonna work.
Yes.
But you have to vote yes for everything, all the three, four, or five things you said, the penthouse, the fifth floor, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, and the joining of the lots.
Yes.
If it's not, if it's not all yes, this whole thing is over.
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you, thank you, attorney.
You're welcome.
Okay, so I had a, a question, and I don't know if it was actually testified by the certified planner, but is the, is there a clearance from you as a certified planner that, that you know in a spot zone like this, that the, the planning board can approve this without city council legislation?
No, we cannot.
Okay, so then can I ask the question, are you seeking an approval for this tonight?
No, you're seeking, not seeking an approval, we're, the council's seeking recommendations from the planning board regarding proposed amendment, this proposed amendment to the Main Street redevelopment plan.
So tonight, you're not seeking to join the lots?
This is what I'm seeking tonight. So council referred this to the planning board for their review and recommendation. The planning board will get, is reviewing it right now and they will give their recommendation and the municipal council will. and the municipal council will consider it as an amendment to the redevelopment plan. Later on, after, if and when an amendment is adopted by the municipal council, then the property owner can make an application to the planning board for site plan review. Tonight is not site plan review.
Oh, okay. So then your testimony that the public is commenting on and that everyone is listening to is just to explain to us what the planning board is looking at and recommending and so, talking about, and this whole package is going to the council for legislation?
Correct.
Okay, so no one's voting tonight on joining the lots. You, no, it's the planning board. I've heard them before vote on joining lots, but in this case, since it's a redevelopment lot with a non-redevelopment lot, it's gotta go legislation back to the council, correct?
Correct.
And the public can participate at that point?
Yes, when it's in ordinance, there'll be a public hearing.
No, 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 no. When it goes, when it, when it goes to the city and council with the planning board recommendations of tonight, when the city council considers legislation, will there be a public portion comment question of that meeting?
Yes.
Okay, all right, good. Then I think, uh, I think that's the only other question I had. I may have had one of, uh, oh, uh, are, you're not allowed to say whether the the penthouse is for the developer. That's not anything the public can ask, right?
That's outside.
Is that for rent?
No, outside the scope of her testimony. That's not for tonight.
Okay, no, I understand, okay. And, uh, the other question about the, uh, the elevator, uh, did you, did you state that four stories? You don't have to have an elevator on Main Street?
She did not.
I did not.
That was someone else that made a comment about the elevator. She didn't make any comments about an elevator.
Uh, uh, all right, planning board attorney, though, you, you would agree to me that that's not a factual statement. I don't know who made it. I don't know who made it, a board, a board member, somebody said.
Someone else on the board made a comment about construction, building heights and the need for elevators. It wasn't this witness.
Okay, but they.
Not, I have no clue.
All right, but they did, uh, I think it was the person, Rick, who said, if it's four stories, we don't need an elevator. If it's five, we have to have it.
It wasn't, but it wasn't Michelle, so she can't answer.
Okay, so, and it wasn't you. I know it wasn't you.
No, it wasn't.
You would never say that.
Mr. Mignoli.
Okay.
Get to the point.
Okay, I'm almost, wait, I think I'm, uh, I'm almost at my last, uh. Okay, uh, you, you testified that, that you thought should this, uh, plan be legislated and approved and and get built, that it, it would in fact enhance that four-corner Monroe Main Street area?
I don't think I said enhance.
Oh, wow.
I, I, I don't think those were my words.
Uh, okay, would it, would it increase density?
Yes.
Would it, would it add affordable housing?
Yes.
Okay, so that's what I meant. Okay, um, all right, I think that's it. Thank you, thank you very much, board and council and witness. And and is there a comment later tonight?
Yes.
Yes, Barbara already mentioned it.
Yes, there will be.
Okay, thank.
Okay.
Thank you.
Um, the next person that has their hand raised is, um, Mr. Goonan. Um, can you please unmute and, um, ask your question?
Yep, can you hear me?
Yes.
Great, uh, my name is Michael Goonan. I live at eleven oh one Ocean Avenue. Uh, Michelle, I just had a quick question for you, since we're talking about, uh, building heights and the, you know, how that is in the context of the area. How far is this, um, proposed lot from the Monroe Towers?
Uh, I wanna say it's, uh, you know what? Before, since I'm testifying, give me one minute, I wanna be exact.
Thanks. And you can tell me in blocks, if it's like, you know, is it right across Bond? I just don't remember.
No, it's, um, no, I'm in, I'm trying to zoom in to the map here to make sure I'm, I'm not off by a few blocks.
You, you can see the corner of the Monroe Towers lot in the photo.
It's, it's almost catty, catty corner. I would say it's, it's less than a block.
Okay, and the Monroe Towers is like approximately how many floors?
It's one of the tallest buildings in the city, um.
Don't guess.
I'm not gonna guess.
Yeah, that's, that's okay. But it's a tall, it's a tall building. It's a tall building, right?
It's very tall. Here, I'll tell you, give me one sec. Five, six, seven, eight, nine. Approximately sixteen stories.
Okay, thanks. That, that was my only question, just because I know we were talking about if this lot would be out of context with the area, but there's obviously a much taller building, I guess, right there, catty corner. So that was my only question. Thank you very much, Michelle.
You're welcome.
Okay, the next person that we have up is the, is, uh, Warner, uh, has their hand raised?
Folks, how are you?
Hello.
Is this working?
Yes.
Yes, we can hear you.
Great, glad to hear it. Um, I came a little late, um, and I didn't have a chance to look at slide number four. If you could go to, uh, page four in, uh, what you're displaying right now.
Okay, wait, give me a second because I need to get out of what I was in before.
Yeah, it's, it's the first page with text.
No, give me a sec, okay, um, the first page with text, number four, rehabilitation designation and criteria.
Yeah, if you could show that, I didn't have a chance to see that.
Oh, it says my screen sharing's paused. Wait a minute. Can you see it now?
Oh, thank you, okay. Let me just take a, a quick look at this. I'll speed read it. Uh, okay, redevelopment law, uh, 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 uh. Okay, great. And then go to, uh, number five that you had up. Next page. Okay, all right. So, uh, one of, one of my questions is, what's the existing frontage of the, uh, the auto use, that lot that you're talking about, the, the frontage on Main Street? Uh, what's the twenty-five, thirty feet?
Oh, you mean the, the, the square footage of the frontage?
No, the, the frontage, what's the frontage?
Yeah, but what do you mean?
Fifty feet?
The width?
The distance?
From the corner?
Yeah, I would say it's fifty.
It's fifty feet, you think? Okay. And the lot going to the east, the red line all the way to the back where you're proposing this merger is, how long?
Give me a sec. I, I don't want to testify because I'm approximating.
Yeah, sure, sure.
You don't have a reason to say that, you don't know.
What?
If you don't know, don't guess.
No, I'm not, not gonna guess, but as you can see from the illustration I have, it's three-quarters of the block.
Yeah, it looks to be about maybe a hundred and seventy-five feet or so. They're about, some guessing.
No.
Okay.
Whatever.
Yeah, whatever it is, okay. So the current zoning for the frontage on Main Street, what's the height, uh, limit on that? Is it four stories? Is that what I heard?
It's three without affordable housing, four with affordable housing.
Okay, and these are defined as stories or actual heights in feet?
Stories.
Because there was always a discrepancy about what's a story, right? So is there a?
I don't know of a discrepancy, but stories.
Stories, so what's a story? Is there, is there a height limit in feet? Or is it just nomenclature of a height limit?
I'm unsure, I would have to look it up in the plan, it's.
You don't know the answer?
I don't know it.
The plan.
Okay, all right. Um, wh- what are the design, uh, regulations that would be in effect in, in this parcel? Um, architectural design standards? What would the one look to, to design a building for this lot?
I mean, in the Main Street, the Main Street redevelopment plan has a set of design standards that we are not amending tonight, but I added an additional design standard to this parcel that large expanses of blank wall shall feature murals.
Oh, okay, that page right there, interesting. Um, why would there be a presupposition that there would be large expanses of blank wall? That's highly undesirable, isn't it?
Because this property, this, this will most likely go to zero lot line where building code prohibits windows.
What code would that be? Buildings are built to the lot line regularly with windows.
No, they're not in New Jersey, they are not. If it's an interior lot line, the Universal Construction Code prohibits a window on the property line.
Are you certain of that? That makes no sense. Considering all of downtown is built to the lot line and all have windows.
On the sides? New construction on the sides.
Well, new construction perhaps, but right across the street, the YMCA building is built to the lot line, has windows on the first floor. It's typical in a downtown environment, that windows on the first floor.
That is a historic structure. The modern Universal Construction Code does not permit, permit interior windows on interior lot lines.
What, what are you calling an interior lot line? I'm talking about the public facade.
Okay, I have my map here.
Monroe, I'm talking about along Monroe.
Yeah, Monroe has windows. Monroe would have windows because that's permitted, interior.
Oh, okay.
Lot line, I said interior lot line.
Okay, so what lot lines are you referring to as blank walls?
The interior lot lines, the ones that do not have street frontage.
Oh, okay, there's a lot lines on adjoining properties. I got you, okay. Adjacent property lot lines is how I would describe them, okay. Um, all right, um, thank you very much, appreciate it.
No problem.
All right, um, motion to close, public question?
Still move, Jim Henry.
Second, Mike Manzola.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi. Any opposed? Eyes have it. Michelle, you need a drink?
I don't have one nearby.
I think we're pretty close, okay, go ahead.
Okay, um, we need to open up, uh, any, any questions from the public?
Or no, comments?
I'm sorry, quite, any comments for the, from the public? Can we, uh, get a motion to open up, uh, public comment?
Still moved, Mike Manzola.
Second. Can I have a second?
Second.
Abubiyere Kalipo, all in favor?
Hi.
Hi. Any opposed? Hearing none, eyes have it. Uh, we can have public comment for, uh, three minutes.
Three minutes, yes, uh, can we open up, uh, three, five, zero for three minutes, please, uh, for public comment? Phone number.
Yeah, Ernest McNally, seven ten Northeast Street, Boynton Beach, Florida. Uh, okay, so, um, my comment is.
Ernest.
I'm sorry? Okay, oh, I have my raised hand, my right hand raised.
I appreciate that. Do you sound, sir, testimony about the given this matter or opinions you're gonna render? Are the truth and whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Okay, thank you, go right ahead.
Uh, so, I, I have, I have a lot of issues with, with this development and ones like it, ones that are active.
I'm sorry for interrupting you, please.
Go ahead.
My apology. There's no timer.
Um, if we could, if we could.
I have to stop the screen share.
If you could stop the screen share, Michelle, please?
Yes.
Thank you. All right, Nate.
All right, let's start over. Ernest's full three minutes.
Yes.
All right, so wait a minute, so I'm on a three-minute?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, go right ahead, go, go.
Okay. So, um, so relative to other buildings in the area, I, I, I think when I go to the planning and the zoning meetings, either go or virtual, whatever, uh, and the council meetings, you know, I hear, I hear a lot of things about what Asbury needs and wants and, and how, you know, high density is the answer and uh, every, every, anything close to the transportation center should get a lot of waivers and variances, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. But I don't agree with any of that. I, 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 I don't even know if there's a housing shortage in Asbury. I think what there's a shortage of is affordable housing. But other than that, I mean, uh, e- every other week is another four hundred units, three hundred units, a hundred townhomes, two high-rises. Where are all these people coming from? And none of them are affordable housing along Ocean Avenue. You know, they're all for part-time, out of, out of state and out of county, you know, millionaires and billionaires. So what do they care? They don't vote, they don't live here full-time. So, and a lot of them are developers, so they wanna build these things with penthouses for themselves and, you know, it's just, it, it's not coming out correctly in front of the public. It, it shouldn't be just a big mouth like me calling. It shouldn't be. You know, I, when it was around Deal Lake Drive where I live, it bothered me because I live there, uh, uh, on Park and, and Deal Lake Drive. But still, it didn't matter. They told me, oh, it doesn't matter, it's what the developers wanna do, and so, I, I don't know why the seventy or eighty percent of people who rent in Asbury, well, a huge percent are, are below the, the desired income. I don't know what you wanna call that. And, and you hold it out that if you let them build it bigger and wider and with a penthouse, you'll have, you'll have twenty percent affordable housing. But that means you'll have eighty percent for, for market value, which could be these out-of-town millionaires and billionaires again. And they don't ride the train, by the way. They, they come with the, you know, fancy cars and two, three cars per unit, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So, so I don't like the fact that when I go to the meetings, it seems like the boards, the committees, the mayor, the council, and the developers and the city professionals are always on the exact same side. And the regular homeowners, like I was for fifteen years, and I hope to be soon again in Asbury, part-time, uh, we, we get a chance to say a little something, but then we always lose. We lose a hundred percent. And, and one last thing I'll say. When you brought up about the fact that the Monroe is a block or less than a block away, and it's sixteen stories, when you're gonna put five plus a penthouse there, there are people who live with a west view at the Monroe, and on the first five floors, this building is gonna affect it, like the one you're doing behind the North Beach, five stories on Kingsley, like the one you wanted.
All right, Mr. McNally, your three minutes are up. Thank you for your, thank you for your comments.
And thank you, thank you very much.
Um, anyone else for comments? Uh, we do have, uh, we have Warner, uh, for comments? Go ahead.
Warner?
Yes, thank you very much.
All right. Okay. You silence for a testimony about the given this matter or the opinions you're gonna render, or the truth, whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Okay, thank you. We have your address, I, we're, we're good, go ahead.
Thanks, appreciate it. Um, it's an interesting, uh, interesting hearing. Um, I do have a, a couple of concerns, though. Um, I'm not clear as to what the current height limit is in the existing plan. It's been referred to as, uh, stories or floors, and this proposal is referring to a sixty-foot max with a twelve-foot addition on top. I think you need to start comparing apples to apples and start talking about everything in ultimate maximum feet in height. Um, and I hope you're really thinking about that. Uh, this controversy came up, uh, in the waterfront redevelopment plan also, where it referred to stories, Uh, this controversy came up, uh, in the waterfront redevelopment plan also, where it referred to stories and then developers were creating, uh, atriums that were, uh, you know, 20 feet high and calling it one story and ultimately shooting the buildings, uh, higher than they normally would have been. So, uh, that's, that's one comment, is there should be a standardized measurement method, no matter what we're looking at here. Um, I'm also a bit concerned about the width of the, the lot at the Main Street side. I can't picture a 50-foot wide, 72-foot tall building sitting there on the corner as being in any way attractive or indicative of the kind of development that Asbury Park is looking for. Um, a consistency of height, consistencies of mass and scale are desirable attributes. And I see this as, uh, an anomaly essentially. Perhaps not the back part going toward Monroe. Um, but certainly if that height limit were applied to Main Street on that small frontage where the tire store is, I think this would stick out like a sore thumb. So, uh, some things to consider. Uh, thank you. That's all I have.
All right, thank you. Um, can I get a motion to close, public comment? I don't see any other hands raised.
Jim Henry moved to the close.
Okay.
Second?
Mike Manzella, second.
Thank you. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Hearing none, eyes have it.
All right, um, any other, uh, do we have any other comments from the planning board members that they would like to, to say?
Jim Henry, I have another question. I'd like Michelle to answer for me. Uh, Michelle?
Just a second, just a second, Jim. Just a second.
Okay.
Um, Jack, if we open up questions again, do we have to go through the whole round again?
Yeah, you're gonna wind up, you gotta allow cross-examination of the witness on the testimony that's being presented. So if there's additional, I mean, answering one question is one thing, but there, you know, you don't know. I mean, I don't know the question. I don't know the answer, and other people may wanna ask questions. Let me ask the question and then you make your, uh, ruling after I ask it. Cause I think it's a clarification rather than a new question. Uh, Michelle, concerning the penthouse, uh, you, you mentioned something about a setback and a percentage of the, uh, area, uh, would that be in, in this new recommendation? That goes to the, uh? Michelle, maybe I can help here. But you tell me if I'm wrong. This way we can not wind up reopening the whole thing. That, I, I was talking to Michelle about that in the discussion. I don't believe you, the, the proposed amendments are what they are, were on the screen. But as part of your recommendations back to the mayor and council, you have every right to say, we think you ought to have the setback of that consistent with the same requirement that's in the downtown redevelopment area and all that as a recommendation of, of, uh, sending it back. But it's not part of this applicant, it's not part of this referral. Thanks, Jack. That answer, I think. Yeah, that answers it. Okay.
Does anybody else, anybody else on the planning board have any comments that they would like to share with everyone? No? All right, can I get a, uh, uh, a motion to, uh, recommend approval of this amendment to the council?
Actually, we need to recommend, based first we had, in that process, pardon me for interrupting, we have to find consistency with the master plan. Uh, and, and if not, then we'd have to say where it is. But I, I, I heard Michelle mention the master plan, that it will provide additional affordable housing, which is consistent with the master plan. Uh, and if you have any ideas that it does, it's inconsistent with the stated goals and objectives of the Main Street redevelopment plan, I'd like to hear that. And if you think that it's the opposite, that in fact it is inconsistent with that, uh, hear that. And whatever recommendations you as a board feel you wanna make back to the council, so they can take them into consideration when they draft the final ordinance. So that's, that's what I'd like to hear, if possible.
Oh, I know that, 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 that I certainly would like to make sure that the, that the recommendation uh, is consistent with the, with the Main Street redevelopment, so that we have the same requirements that we would normally.
Okay.
John?
This is, uh, this is Mike. I would like to, uh, make a friendly amendment to your motion, Barbara, to say that, uh, the penthouses should be limited to 25% of the, uh, square footage area of the roof.
There should be a setback?
And, and setback 12 feet from the building line at least.
Would it be fair to say that I can, when I make, when I put that comment in, if everybody votes in favor of it, add to that, similar to that, uh, which is set forth in the, uh, in the CBD?
Yes, I would say that's true.
Thank you.
And the, and the assumption also is, is that in, in my mind, that this is all consistent with the, uh, master plan?
Okay. Okay. Any other comments or recommendations from the board members for the motion?
Anything else?
Um, I would, you know, it's around consistency, consistency with the master plan, there's affordable housing, density around transit, and redevelopment of Main Street are all three goals of the master plan that this is working towards.
Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. So you want, do we have a motion?
Uh, I will make a motion, um, to, uh, a, a positive referral to council? Is that how?
Yeah, with those comments, yeah, ship it back with those.
With those comments, yeah.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Any discussion on the motion, other than what the, the comments are? They're hearing none, we'll take the roll. Let me get, uh, the sheet. Okay, let me, uh, I'll be glad when Irene takes this job back, cause I'm not very good at it.
No, you're excellent, Jack.
Uh, so let's put this down here. Give me one second. Krizak. Referral. Okay. John Moore?
Yes.
Yvonne Clayton?
Yes.
Michael Manzella?
Yes.
Jim Henry?
Yes.
Jennifer Souter?
Yes.
Trudy Syfax is absent. Alexis Taylor?
Yes.
Eric Alipo?
Yes.
Rick Lambert? Rick, you're muted.
Yes.
Thank you. And Barbara Krizak?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, we got it.
Thank you.
Okay, the, uh, the next item that we have up for, uh, we have an executive session, so do we need to do the resolution?
Yes.
Executive session first?
Yes.
All right, can I get a, um, oh, there's a resolution. Uh, can I, can I get a motion for approval for the executive session to be held?
I'll make your. So moved.
Second.
That Jennifer?
Oh, Yvonne.
Oh, Yvonne, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Okay, um, all in favor? All right. Any opposed? Hearing none, uh, eyes have it.
All right, do we have to do anything before we all sign off to the other session?
Let me ask you a question, Barbara. Again, is this going to be involving the beach club? If so, I will recuse myself.
It is, it is not, Jim. It, it, it involves the, uh, the Fourth Avenue.
Okay.
Application, so both you, Jim, John, and Jen are not invited, as I am also kind of not invited. I have to step away as well. So, four of us cannot be here, but we, we will be welcome to come back to the regular session as soon as discussion is finished.
Um, okay.
It shouldn't, I, I don't know how long I'll take, but if you could hang out and in this session, until then, that would be great. And now you have John and Jen also.
I was gonna say, don't log out, Jim.
Yeah, don't log out.
Okay.
Okay.
Do.
All right, so everybody else that.
It, it's more.
Yes.
Do we have to stay on? All I can do is vote to adjourn.
Right. No, you don't have to stay on. But I don't, if, I don't wanna lose my quorum when we come back on in public.
And I think if John goes, we will not lose the quorum?
Yeah, as long as the five members that are eligible to attend the executive session stay on, we still have five out of nine, so.
We will.
Have a quorum.
Correct.
Okay, so it's okay, John. John?
Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, does everybody else have the, uh, email that I sent that has the link for the, uh, new session? For the executive session? I sent it out after the meeting started.
I'll have to go look.
I, I sent it like, I don't know, 7:30, 7:15, in that timeframe?
I'll see you over there.
Seven seventeen.
Seven seventeen.
Yeah.
Okay, I'll, I'll see you guys over there.
Uh, uh, is that's in an email?
That's in an email, seven seventeen, you should have it.
Okay, so I just.
Including you.
I just, I just reduce this and go to another spot?
Just leave.
You have to, you have to log out the, um, of this, and then you have to log back in.
I get it. Okay. Thank you. Let me call, let's call meeting back to order. I'll take the roll. Okay, uh, call the meeting?
Back to order. Call, call the meeting back to order. It's, uh, 8:49 PM.
Okay, roll call. Uh, John Moore? Okay, he's absent. Yvonne Clayton?
Yeah.
Present. Michael Manzella?
Here.
Jim Henry?
Here.
Jennifer Souter?
Here.
Uh, Trudy Syfax is still absent, I assume. Yes. Uh, Alexis Taylor?
Here.
Present. Eric Alipo?
Here.
Present. Rick Lambert?
Here.
And Barbara Krizak?
Here.
Okay. We have a quorum.
All right, I just need to get where, where we have to go from here, cause we have a couple of resolutions to deal with and.
Yeah, um, the resol, yeah, next matter would be, we've already taken care of, uh, four, Block 401, amendment to the master plan, uh, the executive session. And, uh, now it would be the, uh, adoption of the resolution for 1405 Fourth Avenue Block 2101, Lot 9, that I submitted to everyone today.
Does anyone have, um, that is eligible to uh, vote slash discuss, have anything that they would like to add or change? Any planning board members? No?
I, I have one comment, unless I'm. Okay, on page two, number four, maximum density, I outlined that in red. Uh, I'm not so sure that that is a bulk variance for the reasons that I mentioned earlier under the D5 or D6 criteria. It's not certainly a D variance, because this is an isolated lot or my, a single-family home, two single-family homes as a result of a minor subdivision, which exempts it from the D criteria. There is some, I think Donna Miller may believe that this is a C variance if it's not a D. And if that's the case, well, then I would like authorization to leave number four in. If it turns out that it's not, then I would certainly omit number four, because it's not a variance, I can't make it one. So the vote, I would like, when we vote on that, I would like the permission of the board to go in, in either direction, depending upon what we find. And other than that, if there are any corrections or changes that you would like me to make, I certainly will.
Okay, so, and the only people that can make any motions or have any discussions would be Alexis, Yvonne, Eric, and Rick and Michael.
Yeah, five members.
Cannot.
Yeah, the five members who voted in favor of the action can vote on the memorialization of the resolution. So are there any discussions, any further discussions? Hearing none, could I get a motion to adopt this resolution? Uh, with the caveat, with the section four possibly changing when leaving, staying in or going out? And it would have to be a motion by either Michael Manzella, Yvonne Clayton, Alexis Taylor, Rick Lambert, or Eric Alipo?
I'll move for adoptions, Mike Manzella, with that caveat that, um, item four may need to change based on the opinion of our board planner.
Okay, so.
Second, Yvonne Clayton.
Resolution moved, Michael Manzella. Second, Yvonne Clayton. Okay, so the eligible members are, and I need your vote, um, Michael Manzella?
Yes.
Yvonne Clayton?
Yes.
Alexis Taylor?
Yes.
Rick Lambert?
Yes.
And Eric Alipo?
Yes.
Okay, so let me write this in. Five eligible members voted in favor. Option. Of the resolution. Okay. The other thing that I don't know if it's on the agenda or not, but it doesn't necessarily have to be, is that I need the majority's authorization to, as I, everyone knows, this lawsuit has been filed, appealing that case. And I sent a copy to the board, the board members, to be put in the file and reviewed. But I need the authority from the board to file a responding answer to the complaint and defend the action of the board in the Superior Court. So I would, a voice vote is fine with me. Um, it would be by the majority, uh, that voted in favor to defend the action. Can I get a?
Motion to authorize the board attorney to, uh, respond and represent us in the
Appeal.
The force.
Yeah, I get it. Do I have a second?
Second, Mike Manzella.
Thank you. Any discussion? Uh, vote, let's see, uh, Eric Alipo?
Yes.
Alexis Taylor?
Yes.
Yvonne Clayton?
Yes.
Michael Manzella?
Yes.
And Rick Lambert?
Yes.
Thank you. That's all I have, I think, for the evening.
Okay, then, uh, then, uh, I would like to make a motion to adjourn. Anyone second?
I'll second that mo.
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Eyes have it. Meeting adjourned.
All right, thank you so much.
Thank you.